The previous closed session meeting scheduled for 4:00 p.m. has been closed by acclamation. Before we call the meeting to order, we'll go ahead and do the pledge and the prayer for the 5 o'clock scheduled meeting.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Gracious heavenly Father, Lord God, we bear an worthy hill before you this afternoon, Father, thanking God for this good day you've given us, God. Or we thank you, Father, for our school system, Lord. Thank you for all the blessings you bestowed upon us, God. We ask you, Father, with all the decisions that need to be made moving forward, God, we ask for your wisdom. God, give us insight and understanding, Father, give us the wisdom, Lord, to make the right decisions for our community and for our school, Lord. What we thank you, we ask your blessings on this meeting, in your name we pray. Amen.
All the regular scheduled meetings are ordered. The first item is the approval of agenda. Do we have any additions?
Mr. White, I would like to move A from discussion, excuse me, F from discussion to A. And we had just had a conversation about that. Those are the board policies, and that will allow Ms. Winchester to speak to us. And I thought if we just took care of all of the policy pieces right up on the front, if that's okay with you.
Yes.
Okay? And then shift everything down from there, or however else you want to move that. And then also, I need to add, please, an H to discussion because we need to add a small discussion about the inter-local agreement that the commissioners approved this week. And there needs to be formal action following discussion by the school board on that. And because we are adding that as an H to discussion, then we will also probably need to add an F to action. Okay? So we're going to move F to A, add an H, and then add an F to the action section. That's what I believe that we need to do. There may be some others.
Motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Second.
Any further discussion? I'll favor the question. Pass it to you.
Approval of consent agenda. The only reason that we wouldn't, that you would not approve the consent agenda at this point is if you wanted to have a conversation about anything that's on the consent agenda and pull it out as a separate voting. And there are personnel elements that are, I believe, on the consent agenda. Am I correct?
Yes.
So if you want to talk about what's on there and pull something out to vote on, you can wait on the approval of the consent agenda until later.
Let's, if we could, we'll delay the approval of the consent agenda until after closed session, which is now moved to the next session.
The item B in the discussion. Okay?
Yes.
Since we're moving that forward, it appears to me that we can now address what was Section F but is now Section A and talk about board policies. And I would like to allow Ms. Winchester to come and have a conversation with us about Policy 1310, which has to do with the puberty class and how you want to handle that particular section in there. Okay? So, Ms. Winchester, if you would, give us whatever information that you would like to about fourth and fifth grade puberty class, and then they may have questions for you after.
Okay. Thank y'all for letting me come first. I did not plan on having four small children here, but plans changed, and here we are. So thank y'all for letting me start out. But most of y'all know me, I'm Becca Winchester. I'm the school nurse at West Elementary, just finished up my eighth year there. These are my four pretty babies over here, and I have a teenager at home as well. So anyways, so we'll just get started real quick. Since I have been at West Elementary, we have taught the puberty class in fourth and fifth grade for those eight years that I was there. And as many years back as I can remember, I know when I was in elementary school, we also learned about that. So the way that it is set up right now, if you have a kid that's in fourth or fifth grade, you probably know pretty well. I will pass around, I have these. We have opt-ins forms that we have to have parents sign. I'll just let you pass them around. There's a boys' and a girls'. Sorry. In the past, prior to Parents' Bill of Rights, it was an opt-out. That was just the standard across the state. We took last year off whenever Parents' Bill of Rights came out because we wanted to do some research and make sure we weren't doing something we were not supposed to be doing. So after talking to our state consultants, this year we went forward with the opt-in forms. So we sent these out to all parents. There's a female form and a male form, and you can look on it. It covers the main points that we go over in the class, and then there's also links that you can go on to to watch the actual video. So we present the video. We do not allow kids to ask questions because, as you can imagine, between fourth and fifth graders, there's probably some pretty colorful questions that might come out. So if there's questions they might have, we do allow them to write those down, turn them in. And then for the female class, it's the social worker and I that teach it, so Ms. Cinda and I, Ms. Cinda Dickey, and we pick which ones are appropriate, which means, is it about your personal hygiene? Is it about the changes that your personal body is going through? If it is anything that is like any bit questionable, like, ah, is this something that we probably shouldn't be talking about, then we say, if your question wasn't answered, that means you probably need to go home and talk to your parents about that because we're not trying to get into any messy stuff. We're trying to tell kids that you need to take a shower every day. You stink. Believe it or not, those kids, I know our parents are telling them that, but they need to hear it from somebody else. And these teachers every year say, when are you coming to our classes, please? We need you to tell them. So we're telling them, take a shower, wash your face. We're telling the girls what changes their bodies are going through. But other than that, there's not really anything outside of the ordinary. We do have, I have the email that's referenced that Mr. Sell had sent me about the questions. It says, the question, what's in question right now is instruction on gender identity, sexual activity, and sexuality. As far as that, we don't dive into that whatsoever. The closest that I would say that we come to it is saying, we send out, the people that are listed as male get male forms and females get female forms. That's it. Parents have their right to sign it. If they don't sign it, we don't question. I will say we get about 80% of those forms back. We might get one to two per grade level that say, we don't want our child to take this. Totally fine, we don't question it, goes in the file, that's that. I would say the majority of the other kids that we don't get forms back is those forms don't make it home. Because then parents ask me later on, why didn't you teach that class? Well, we did. Your kid just didn't bring the form home. So other than that, it's not anything, I don't know, anything crazy or out there. I do think it's super important that we do teach it in fourth grade. There are some studies that show that since 1977, each decade, puberty is beginning three months sooner for mainly females, males some, but mainly females. And I have girls that come to my office that I would average probably five to 10 a year that are going through some pretty big changes during the school year. And when they already have that knowledge, it's not this big panic, my day is ruined, what do I do? You go to Nurse Becca, we take care of it, you go back to class. Because at the end of the day, my main goal is to keep kids healthy and safe so that they can be in a good environment to learn. So yeah, that's it. So if you guys have any questions, let me know.
And my concern about changing the language in that particular section is if we take either fourth or fifth grade out of that, it may preclude us being able to provide the class that Becca is talking about. But by doing it the way that we're doing it at the elementary schools, and we need to be very careful with this, with an opt-in process, then I believe that parents have the opportunity to do exactly what the Parent Bill of Rights was designed to do, and they have the option to control the education of their child in the places where they believe that it needs to be most controlled. So that's why I think that this particular policy, the way that it's written, is good. However, do you have any questions for Becca?
I'm good with just doing the puberty thing. I think we have to do that, I think.
Yeah.
And I like the opt-in thing.
Yeah, there's no question about it, so.
Do we need to do anything to maybe sure of, like you said, some of these forms maybe just don't make it home?
Yes.
Do we need to maybe find a more, a way to guarantee that a parent looks at it?
And that's why I said we need to be very careful with that, to make sure that even for the parents, for the students that may not be as responsible as we would like them to be, that we have a second method of contact.
So I'll say what we started, and it's something we're to win with, that we've learned with Infinite Campus, that we started last year. In the past, we also did mass vision and hearing screens in first, third, and fifth grade. We did not need opt-ins for those either. It was just opt-out. And it used to be you'd send an all-call if the parent didn't want you to screen, they had to call and do that. Well, now they have to opt-in saying, yes, I want you to screen my child. So last year, we had them put it on the beginning of the year registration, and that worked out really well. So I think that's something the nurses, we've actually talked about. If we can talk to our IT department and get them to add this section onto that form, so when they do their beginning-of-the-year stuff, we already have the consent for it. And that way, there's also a piece in this bill that they have to have a certain amount of time to go over the material we teach. So we typically wait until the end of October, November anyway, just because the beginning of the year is pretty hectic. So that gives parents ample time as well to review the material.
And I think also, to our elementary principals, it would be good for us to use a phone call or perhaps a dojo or whatever works best. Because we're in a day whenever one form of communication is not sufficient by itself. And so we just make that happen, and then we've really given it our best effort. I think that's a wise statement, though, Casey.
Yeah. I'm open if anybody ever wants to talk. I know I would much rather talk on the phone in person with a parent any day before, you know, relaying through 50 different people. So I think people at this point pretty know I'm a pretty open person, so anytime anybody wants to pop in or whatever, we'll go through it.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody got their VBS invites from Koi, so.
Thank you, young man, for our VBS invitation. Appreciate that.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Becca. Well, there are some other policies that are to be considered. 6120, which is student health services, and that largely had to do with who's going to make the decision about medical care, what the level of med, and I'm not using the right words on this, but the planning, monitoring, diabetic care, and things like that. And remember, I changed that from the 504 coordinator to the school nurse. Makes more sense. And that came back from our attorneys, and they said that's fine. Also, the bullying and harassment, which Karen Cook added a statement about deep fake image generation. And if you need to know more about that, we'd be happy to talk about it after the meeting. But we need to have some protection on that. As I was traveling to Raleigh last week, I saw billboards about deep fake image creation and to be cautious of that. So it's a real danger. So that really needs to be there. The other one is the student dress code review, and we have provided to all of you the responses from our administrators. And I have provided for you a policy with language that some of you have given to me that goes along with the administration. And we can move on this tonight or not, it's up to you. We need to make a move on this if we're going to make any changes soon, preferably before early July, so that we can make sure that we get it to the public and we can get it in our handbooks and that we've given it due diligence. Okay? So do you want to have any more discussion about that? Do you want to move forward with this policy? Are you good with the way that it sounds?
Yes.
What do you think? Or do you want?
Is this the most recent one?
That is the one, yes.
I feel like I haven't quite had the chance to dive into some of these other things that you and I talked about, that you sent me. And so I feel like we're probably all on the same page. I just want to make sure that we, I guess I just want to make sure that we get it right because whatever we do launching forward from here into the next school year, we'll make sure that we all feel good about it. And I don't know that I feel like I've had enough time to sit down and look over it. But that's just me, and everybody else may feel differently. I just want to kind of, I wanted to look and see kind of a few more things, go back over some of these other policies, and just make sure that we're being very clear because wording is just so important for the way things are interpreted.
And policy wording is everything.
Yeah. Yeah.
So Lisa, am I hearing that you would like for us to perhaps table that for this evening and then come back to it at the next meeting?
Yeah, or even if there's a way, at some point, we can even just, and if that's tonight, just discuss it a little more in depth and kind of, I know we did get some good feedback from administrators, and so I think that's very helpful. And then I had like several other policies looking at, you know, just kind of comparing and just making sure we're kind of hitting everything, but we don't go, oh, you know, a month down the road or two months into the school year, like, you know, oh, did we miss this?
We, okay, I understand what you're saying. Cody, I don't know exactly where to go with this. We could move this to the end and have a longer discussion. You could have a discussion now about it. Lisa is saying she really wants some more time to talk about it and think about it.
Probably my suggestion, because sometimes if you haven't looked at it, that you don't really know what you don't know.
Sure.
And I don't want to put Lisa in a spot where she feels like she's having to ask questions or scramble for a response. Certainly, there's no issue that if we table it to the next meeting, if she finds anything, if either one of us finds anything that we need to talk to Mr. Sell about, then we can do that and kind of clear that up before the next meeting. I just don't want to put anyone on the spot to try to figure out all the questions that they need answered right now, so we can table that until the next meeting.
And our next meeting is the June 26 closeout meeting. We could put it on that because that meeting is morphing into a little more than just closeout for finances. And so we could just work on it between now and then some. Okay?
I just want you to feel better.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Those are all of the policies. That's all of item A that we moved. Next, Cody, on the agenda would be personnel, and I think that some of you might want to go to closed session for that.
Yeah, I think it's just going to be for just a brief session for the closed session. But if anyone would look at section five, it might be appropriate.
Very end. I'll make a motion for the Board of Education to go in closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11 under subsection A1 and 5 to prevent disclosure of privileges or confidential information.
Second.
Any further discussion? I'll favor the motion. Motion passed, we're being closed session. Just a minute.
Tommy, I need you on this one, please, sir. Thank you. I'm all ready. I'll pay for it right there.[1244.91]
The next.
How do you, Cody, how do you want to deal with consent agenda now? Do you want to wait and move, move on that when we get to action items?
Yeah, let's move on it just before action items to approve the consent agenda. And that way we can vote on the consent agenda first.
All right, that makes sense. So next we have Stephanie going to come and talk about several different finance pieces. And I'll just leave the rest of it to her because she's the bomb.
Good evening. So the first thing on the agenda is to discuss the insurance contracts. So the errors and omissions, general liability is once again through the North Carolina School Board Trust. The premium last year was $8,876 and the current year has a little bit of an increase at eight, no, I'm sorry, $8,876 this year. Last year was $8,925. So.
The next. How do you, Cody, how do you want to deal with consent agenda now? Do you want to wait and move, move on that when we get to action items?
Yeah, let's move on it just before our action items to approve the consent agenda. And that way we can vote on consent agenda first.
Okay, all right, that makes sense. So next we have Stephanie going to come and talk about several different finance pieces. And I'll just leave the rest of it to her because she's the bomb.
Good evening. So the first thing on the agenda is to discuss the insurance contracts. So the errors and omissions, general liability is once again through the North Carolina School Board Trust. The premium last year was $8,876 and the current year has a little bit of an increase at eight. No, I'm sorry, $8,876 this year and last year was $8,925. So a little bit of a decrease on that. The automobile and inland marine also through the North Carolina School Board Trust. This year's premium is $20,082. Last year's premium was $18,070. Part of that was just some changes too that we had during the previous year. But that would be the new premium for the current year. Workers' comp also through the North Carolina School Board Trust. This year's premium is $65,672. This is all based on estimated payroll which could increase. And they would shore that up at the end of the year through a payroll audit. Last year's premium was $75,557. We do have an experience modification of 0.84 which does help reduce the amount of that premium based on our claims history. And then finally is our cyber liability which is through Chubb. They had initially said there was going to be a significant increase in our premium. However, they did offer our renewal at $14,174. And last year was $13,418 which is a blessing. They had originally said I think about a 30 or 40% increase, so. Are there any questions on that? None of the coverage limits have changed. They'll all be at the same limits that we had in the previous years. Let's just renew on what we previously had.
Stephanie, what are the limits on the general liability?
Um, one second. I thought I had that right here for what I mean.
I didn't see it.
I want to say that it's a million dollars and then we have an excess coverage up to 3 million after that. But I can get those for you.
I believe I remembered that from last year.
Yeah.
And our new vehicles are not included on that auto?
They're not.
Yet or?
They're not. So we would be adding those once, if that's approved, then we'd be adding those to that policy as well. And possibly taking some off as well.
Other questions for Stephanie?
Okay, so the next thing is the vehicle purchases which was voted on, I think, by phone call or email. However, for public record. So we had originally come and gotten approval for leasing three vehicles in our fleet for vehicles. After we had gotten the approval, Enterprise had changed their requirements for liability insurance, increased in those limits because of transporting or having the potential to transport students. And so they were going to increase that limit to like $5 million which was going to create a significant increase in our liability insurance. So we went the route of getting quotes for vehicles and actually went with a state contract, which is the North Carolina State Contract 2510A for fleet vehicles. And modern Toyota out of Winston-Salem is who has the state contract on the Toyotas. So it'd be the same exact vehicles, one Toyota Sienna and two Camrys. And so we would get those on the state contract price, which is the same pricing that we were seeing through Enterprise as well. There were, they already had some Siennas on hand. There were 10 that were ordered and then the contract fell through. So they had two left, so we were able to secure one of those Siennas that was coming in. And then they had some Camrys that were coming in that we were able to secure two of those. So all that to say that there are some added features on those vehicles. So there's a, we're paying a little bit more than the state contract because they're like, they had floor mats. The Camrys had spoilers and then they had a convenience package. So, but we got a 10% discount on that. The overall price for the outright purchase is $99,975. The lease cost was going to cost us $105,530. So we're still saving money and we'll own the vehicles outright. We won't be doing any kind of financing. So that was just bringing that forward for public record. Finally was the driver's ed contract. We did a RFP for the driver's ed for 2223. And that RFP says that we could do the contract for that year plus two renewals. This will be our second renewal and then we would bid it out again next year. For the current year, there's no change in pricing. Everything would remain the same as far as the contract price for that. We increased that like $5 a student last year, so we would not be increasing this year.
Just a couple of things on that. Like on, on page two there on the textbooks and materials, it said the contractor shall be responsible for updating, replacing textbooks and materials. You know, if we just say that, does that mean they can? Should we say board approved textbooks? The way that's, the way that's written, they could be replaced with whatever they decide to replace it with?
Textbooks have to follow through a particular process according to board policy.
Okay.
So I don't think that they would come in and just put anything in there that they want to.
Okay, that's just a question I had on that. And then the instruction per day on number eight be there. It says weekends from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Does that include Sundays? They could go from, on Sundays from 8:00 in the morning till 9:00 at night?
I would say so if it's, you know, suitable to the parent and the student, then yes, they could.
So that would be with parent approval?
Mm-hmm.
I would, I would, I'm not saying it's required as part of this, but I would just imagine that that would be.
It's an option.
Yeah, an option and if it's, you know, suitable for the, the student and the family.
I don't like it. I guess it is what it is.
Well, because we're a private contractor, I guess they get to, to establish their own guidelines. Or we could go back to them and say that we're not satisfied with that. And they would then be challenged to either rewrite it or not work with us. But I think one of the concerns is how many private contractors for this are available?
Yeah.
In the years I've been here, there's only been one.
Right.
And it's the same group we've been dealing with, right?
It is. And I don't know what their normal schedules have been. And this was a contract that we had gotten from the attorneys, but.
Parents.
I think they're just really trying to be flexible and offering enough times for students who would otherwise not have time throughout the week in order to do it. I think it's really just in order to provide that flexibility.
And if a parent, you know, if a parent's okay, then that's okay.
Are there any other changes, Stephanie, to this contract from previous versions or anything?
This contract, actually, this contract was the contract that we had gotten from our attorneys last year. They had provided the contract, but I went back with using the one that our attorney had provided, so.
And do, do we anticipate them being okay with that or they?
Yes, he's already, I've already sent it to him and he is okay with it.
I don't know, I wouldn't get any better than that.
Yeah, I'm okay. Again, you, the choices are so limited.
Yeah.
In this. Any other questions for Stephanie?
Thank you.
Michelle's going to come and talk to us about the CEP. It's been a while since we've had a, had a board meeting. I, I think that you're going to be pleased with, with the fact that at the end of the year, the food nutrition program has operated with a profit. Now, there is a particular reason that it is operating at a profit. And as Michelle goes through her documentation, I don't know where she just went.
She's getting her.
Oh, oh, okay. I thought she just decided to leave. I didn't know. One of the reasons, you're going to see that there was a shift that happened in February that allowed that, allowed this. And it's not without concern, which we'll talk about in a little bit. But when Michelle gets herself ready, she can show us why we are in, with a profit now, which was a concern.
This podium's not big enough for me. It, it must not be working.
Oh, is it on?
There you go.
Just to let you know a little bit about our CEP program. It is the community eligibility program and it allows schools with high need to provide a breakfast and lunch for students that would not be able to otherwise pay for it. It covers all students for free. There's no free and reduced meal applications that we're used to in the past. And all of these numbers are based on the previous year's direct service. And that is your Medicaid students, it is your SNAP students, anyone that gets federal benefits. CEP funding, it's a difficult formulation. This year, they, they say that for every 10 students that receive benefits, there's probably six out there that do not get the benefits that they need, that they qualify for. So that allows to take our direct cert percentages and multiply that by 1.6 to actually get our reimbursement rates. So this past year, we were at 58%. We use the 1.6 and we get 94%. That 94% says that I get reimbursed for 94 meals out of 100 at a, excuse me, free rate. And the other 6% are reimbursed at 50 cents a meal. So this coming year, Swain County has qualified to be reimbursed for the free rate for everybody at 100%. That will give me approximately an extra $50,000 this coming year. The benefits to have in this program, our parents in Swain County saved 1.2 million dollars in CEP this year. There was no student debt. In the prior year when we didn't have CEP, we had $41,000 in student debt that we had to come up with. And the students, there's more students eating on CEP than before. This right here shows you in the past three years how our students have increased eating. The first year that is in blue, the 2223, we did not have CEP. That was the first year students had to pay for it after COVID. We did go with CEP 2324 and we had it this past year. My numbers were down this past year. I missed 24,000 meals. A lot of it was that we weren't in school as many days as what we had been in the past. And that's just due to, we had four days that we missed for helling. We had several days that we missed for snow. It just all adds up. And right here's our lunch memberships. These meals that they were eating is against the membership of how many students we have at the schools, not the attendance for the day. So if we have 300 enrolled but only 250 were there, it's still based off the 300, not the 250. This is just showing the total meals served. This includes our after-school program. Our after-school program helped to boost our numbers above last year's because we did start a new program in after-school. This year, as a total, breakfast, lunch, and after-school, we saved our parents 1.6 million dollars. In the past, I have not been profitable. Ever since the $15 an hour wage was implemented, school nutrition has been suffering. It's been very hard to fight that. I've been pinching pennies everywhere to go. This year, after February, I started trying to feed everybody in the elementary schools and the middle school for after-school programs. And as you can see, so my first quarter, I was still losing money at 42,000. And that was in September, December, I'd got it to 16,000. And finally, end of March, I've got a profit of 67,000. But now with that, I know it comes with a lot of headaches for other people. But you got to think about the meals that we're putting in those kids' hands too. Some of those kids don't have meals when they go home. This puts a meal, a full meal. It gives them a meat, your grain, your fruit, vegetable, and a milk. They have a full meal when they go. Do you have any questions about it?
That's pretty impressive. Good work.
We are facing some, some concerns and it's not just the funding piece of it because the funding is taking care of itself now, which is what we were hoping for. And, you know, kudos to Michelle and her staff for, for helping a program be successful that really when you all voted on that the first time, there was, there was some real, some doubt. But it's working, okay? But some concerns are happening right now because of the after-school meals. And the kids are taking those onto buses. And, you know, sometimes kids will, will try to eat things on the bus or they'll, or open their milk and they'll spill it. So it's creating a different level of, of work for our bus drivers. We're talking to Tessa and, and to others about how we can address that. Because we recognize that's a problem, but that's a problem I believe that we can work through. It's also causing a different level of, of strain and perhaps work for, for the staff at our schools. And we recognize that as well. Ryan is working on a solution for his school as well so that perhaps there is, there's less energy that's having to be spent on getting the meals to kids when they don't necessarily need it all for, for every family. So I just want, I want to be upfront about the fact that there are some, some growing pains. But we're going to work to address those. And we're going to work with our staff to make sure that we can address those. But I think that what Michelle has done and what she is, is outstanding and what she said is important also. There are kids that are taking food home that at times don't have that food at the house. So to me, it's worth the effort.
Can the kids get more than one meal or one serving? And I ask that because you, you said it's based on enrolled. And then obviously on a, a regular date or whatever absenteeism.
We can only be reimbursed for one student for a meal. Now, if Johnny doesn't want it, Johnny can take it and then give it to Suzie. But technically, I cannot charge the state for a child having two meals. And we encourage that, hey, you're not going to eat it, somebody else might.
Right.
We do have the share table at breakfast and lunch. And usually by the time lunch is over at the middle of school. over at the middle school, there's nothing left.
I guess I should ask for clarification on the after-school program. Are we talking about any kid can take something home after school, or just, are we talking about the after-school kids?
No, it's the first one.
Okay.
It went to every student in elementary and middle schools.
Elementary and middle, okay. And do we feel like they were, like, kids were enjoying it, taking it, eating it?
It's the first time I've had comments, people thanking me for those meals.
For those, okay.
Breakfast and lunch, I've never heard anything.
Yeah.
But for the after-school program.
They appreciate the actual.
My word.
It has come at a price to our staff.
Just extra cleanup?
Extra cleanup, the extra, extra energy at the end of the day when we're already tired. So we're looking for solutions for that.
And also, my staff has done this through sweat tears.
Yes.
Without an extra hour of work. I've pushed my staff to do that, and they've accomplished that goal. Now, I won't say that they're not dead tired, and something else may not, might have suffered a little bit, but they've managed to do that.
So you project for the next year, you'll continue to do the after-school meals? Or is, are we having to find a solution?
They want to do the after-school meals. I've got to find a better solution for them.
Okay.
So it may not be on that magnitude, but...
But with the 100% reimbursement, though, that you were talking about a little while ago, you were talking about a $50,000 increase in revenue that's going to help us also?
That's if everything stays the same.
Okay.
And that's just the breakfast and lunch.
What are, what are your biggest costs, just operating costs for staff?
Staff is huge.
Does the turnover in staff slow down any in the food and nutrition?
It is hard to find a replacement for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's hard to find subs.
So if we do operate and have a profit, can that money be used for anything? What, what do we do with that profit?
Well, the piece, I'm going to, Michelle should, should answer for this, but there are, there are items that Michelle, outside of just food and wages, that Michelle has to take care of as well, including some equipment needs. So that can roll into that. Have I, have I spoken correctly on that?
Yes, I need new equipment. The middle school is, I've been on one of them.
So, so the, the goal would be to get to, like, a zero balance would probably be?
Including all of the improvements in machines.
So I have it first go down, your spark rate, and that's how I pay for it. And stuff like that that I need.
Can you pay for HVAC?
No. Any other thoughts or questions for Michelle? Thank you. Speaking of HVAC.
Hold on, hold on, I'm not done. That's just the first part.
Okay, hurry up.
Swain County Schools is part of the Far West Co-op, which is part of the North Carolina Procurement Alliance, and we have to put our food out to bid. We have to put all of our big stuff out to bid every year. And with the option, we don't have to do it every year, but we put it out with the option to roll it. Far West Co-op is trying to get a lower per-case fee. Ours is at $6, it's one of the highest per-case fees in the state. And just what that is, is every case of food that I get in, there's an extra $6 charged to that. It doesn't matter if it is 50 pounds of ground beef, or if that's 200 packs of mayonnaise, or six packs of taco seasoning. There's $6 added to that. So that taco seasoning is doubled just because of that $6. But the Far West got together this year, and we decided to put our food back out to bid. We still had another year on it, but we put it back out to bid. We had five vendors that we were talking to. And three of them had backed out before I went to the bid in Raleigh. When I got down there, I'm like, US Foods bidding for the job. So tonight, I come to you asking that you accept the bid from US Foods.
I'd say we had very good students.
That's who we had.
And every school district, or most school districts in Far West have used them, right?
That's all we use. Far West is Cherokee County, Clay County, Graham, Macon, Jackson.
Do you know why the, why the others dropped out, or why the participation was low?
A lot of them said that they did not have the manpower to supply to us.
So it's a geography thing?
There's also discussions of Far West splitting in hopes of getting more people to bid on us.
When you say splitting, you mean like the districts?
So it's not as big as the co-op service?
The co-op.
Yeah, the co-op and A and B.
Yeah, instead of like Cherokee, Clay, and Graham, Jackson are all of them. Me going with Jackson and Macon to maybe get more people to bid, because I think the company is out of Tennessee, then we're going to come all the way to Bryson. And then everybody else is from, well, I had Cisco out of Raleigh bid, or, excuse me, Cisco was out of Charlotte. There was Gold Star, I think they might have been out of South Carolina somewhere. And that may be a solution.
But if everybody's servicing three instead of six, it might make a difference, what you're saying?
Location-wise.
Yeah.
Just so they don't have to travel so far. I don't know. We got to find a solution to it. Any questions on that? But I will ask that you approve US Foods. Altogether, it was a $5.2 million bid, but that's for all the counties together. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. You mentioned HVAC just a minute ago. Casey, you have a bid in your pack from Haynes Heating and Cooling. This is for the air conditioners up on the gym that we have been waiting and waiting to get fixed. But it also includes the opportunity to install phase monitors on the equipment at the high school, which is going to allow us to make sure that the electricity that is coming in is more consistent than it has been. And I, and I don't mean to say that Duke is supplying a poor product, but there are fluctuations. It's, and we are pretty certain that it's causing damage to the equipment because of the fluctuations. So. Say that again? Okay.
Send this quote to them.
We could try that. I'm pretty sure I know what would happen.
But this will fix that issue?
And it will fix the units on top of the gym.
And do we have estimated time when that will be?
That's why we need to get this approved as soon as we can, so that we can get on there.
Before school starts back? I mean, is that what we're thinking?
That's the intent. That is the intent, yes, ma'am. And the reason we're going with Haynes is because it is, they're the ones that provided the, the lead for the quotes and the, and the study that showed what was going on. So it's a proprietary company. And if you have any other questions than that, you're going to have to ask Tommy, because that's, it's out of my ballpark. Okay? Bright Adventures fees, last time I came to you all, I mentioned the fact that we have some parents who are not happy with having to pay the fees that go along with not qualifying for NC pre-K. I provided you with some information that Trish has given to me. Right now, we have 72 four-year-olds who are eligible for enrollment at Bright Adventure. 55 of those qualify for NC pre-K funds. There are about 17 others in various stages of application, and nine of those, excuse me, eight of those will not qualify for NC pre-K. Within those, eight are six families that are concerned. Those six families, if they were to pay the rate, would bring in somewhere over $30,000 towards Bright Adventures, but I need to remind you that that's only 30% of, NC pre-K only pays for 30% of the cost per student. The rest of it's coming through federal and state funding, sort, and local funding sources. I asked for you to consider whether or not you wanted to go to a sliding scale, if you wanted to keep the fee, or how you wanted to move forward, and said that we would postpone conversation until tonight for that, so that you could give more information. Do you want to have a conversation about that, or, or do you want to table that again? How do you want to move forward?
So six students would, at this point in time, would not qualify. We still have about eight slots available?
We have eight slots that are available of the 72, from, of the 72, of the 80 that we have. We have about eight slots that are available, yes. Tricia is sure that those will fill up, and you mentioned six families. Those are six of eight who don't qualify for NC pre-K.
But this, but the employee, we give discount to employee, right?
We have not charged, we chose not, you all chose not to charge employees last year.
So we'd be looking at six people that would, and then you said the, it would be around 30,000 if we were charging what we charged last year?
Yes. It's $32,700 that those six families would bring in.
So if we waived the...
That's the full amount, but if we did it on the sliding scale?
If, if you went on the 200, 400, 600 scale, that's, that's based upon family income, they would bring, those, those families would bring in about $20,000. If you went on a 300, 450, 600 sliding scale that Tricia has developed, they would bring in 23,000.
And she thinks the sliding scale is the best approach?
I think that Tricia would like to, to provide free pre-K to everyone in the world. And, and I would agree with her on that.
Yeah, I would say it would, too.
I say we waive the six applicants, the fees, and that leaves us eight slots. Five of those I'm seeing here are going to be from the three-year-old pool, which are staff dependents. So that leaves only two hanging out, or three hanging out.
Yes. And it's possible that because they are three-year-olds, that they can get subsidy rather than NC, you, three-year-olds don't qualify for NC pre-K, but they can qualify for subsidy.
Yeah, I feel like in the grand scheme of things, at the budget size, 20,000, even 25, 30,000, I just, I don't think it's, yeah. Yeah.
I need you to look at Stephanie and say that.
It's too golf, aren't you, Trish?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that the, the money hurts, of course, when we're always strapped and we're constantly having to ask for money that we're constantly not getting. But at the same time, having a parent approach you, saying, I don't know if I can send my kid to school, is a, is a real hard pill to swallow based on finances, especially in the area we live, knowing that it's getting harder and harder to afford just to live every day. And so with that balance, I think it is the interest, we're here running a business, and I know that business has costs, but the product of running a business is the education of the students. And if we kind of have to buy the financial bullet to make sure that these kids have the opportunity to get world-class pre-K education, and I say that because Ms. Trish does a fantastic job, sorry, Stephanie, but I, I think that that's one that I, I can feel confident sticking my neck out for, and I'm sure everyone else here feels the same way.
All right.
We've always done it until last year, right?
Yes.
We're just really going back to what we were.
Just going back to the way that it was, yes. Okay, so we'll bring that up as a, it really needs to be an action item, because you're rescinding a vote from the past, okay? All right. Moving on down the list, I believe that Katrina's going to come and talk about an AIG plan that she would like for you to approve.
Good evening.
Evening.
So in your packets, you should have had the AIG plan, and then I've provided you a summary of that, so you just read the whole thing. And I'm just going to hit highlights because I don't understand the routine. So the mission and vision of the AIG program in Swain County Schools is to foster academic growth in our gifted students, of course. And we do that with differentiation through acceleration, enrichment, extension, depth and complexity of content. Our K3 students are not officially identified. Teachers have eyes on them, and our AIG specialist has eyes on them, and they serve them in the classroom or through enrichment periods. We do offer things like STEM activities. There is a possibility for early admission to kindergarten with some testing that parents have to have done on their own. It's rare, very, very rare. Grades four is, grade four is where we officially give them a developmental, a developmental education plan, a DEP, and we pull, pull them out for acceleration at, at that point. Grades six through eight, they do a lot of cluster grouping at the middle school, acceleration. And then at the high school, of course, we have honors classes, AP classes, advanced, advanced placement classes, dual enrollment, college visits, four-year high school plan is made for them so that they have the exact plan laid out that they need. We just met with one a couple weeks ago. She didn't like her high school plan, so we came back together and found things, like she's going to take Chinese through a, a community college, like it's, so it's made specifically for her, and yet she's still our student. So we wanted to make sure, you know, we still kept her, but giving her what she needs. The funding is from state, from the state, and you can see we have 110,000, almost 111,000 dollars. That is $1,400 around about per kid, per student, and that is, we do headcounts in the fall and in the spring, which has been interesting with our switch to Infinite Campus, but we've got it down now, I think. And we use that money for PD, for our teachers. We buy supplies. We have salary stoppings for our teachers that are taking on extra duties to serve as our specialists, and field trips. We've got an AIG student right now in Washington DC competing for the National History Day, and so we're going to help fund that trip for her and a parent. When they get back, we'll be able to reimburse them for some of that money. We do use the COGAT test to help identify students. So the first step in identifying our AIG students is basically from classroom EOGs, things like our in-class reports, our I-Radi reports, and then if children are scoring really high on that, in fourth grade and seventh grade, we give them that COGAT test to say, okay, let's, let's start seeing, are they really gifted? And they have to score at 90, at the 90th percentile or above for that. You can see our demographics there at the bottom and top of the next page there. At the elementary school, we have one specialist, and he goes back and forth between the two schools. At the middle school, we have two specialists, one for sixth grade, one for seventh grade, and then they split the load for eighth grade, and we have one specialist at the high school. Professional development, there's lots of professional development that we can offer. There's a conference that we can go to. Right now, we have, this summer, we have a teacher that's going to be taking some training at RESA, our regional education for teachers, and it is a regional credential for AIG. So it's kind of like... So it's kinda like, we're recognizing that you have some training. It's not an official licensure or anything like that. But she can use this training to take the test to become licensed. So we're hoping that she will do that. So we'll have some backup help along the way. Plans for improvement? We have underrepresented groups. And we know that in our demographics. And so we want to make sure we're looking and outreach to those students to see if we can add to that. Also making sure that our teachers are prepared in the classroom to address the needs of these students. So we wanna do some more PD with them, give them an overview. I developed a flow chart for identification. So it'll be easier for teachers to know, oh, this is how I do this. This is how I nominate this student. And so just working on those things with our parents. And that's basically the overview. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Well, I should approve my plan?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Sneed has a CTE plan that...
Do you need approval on this?
So did you bring any money to Brown, that's right?
So I believe in your packet, you received a very formal-looking executive summary. It looks like this. It's really fun to read, you know, and then a signature page for Mr. White to sign and Mr. Sal to sign, hopefully tonight. But we are in the second year of our CLNA plan, which means we are continuing on with the same strategies that we developed last year through that year-long process. And I just wanna hit some of the highlights of that. And this is not on that sheet that I shared with you, but it's just a reminder from last year that we are exposing kids through career fairs and through speakers and field trips to all kinds of career fields, non-traditional as far as traditional career fields. We're working with English, Science, and Math in collaboration through PLT time to look at how we can bring those subject areas into CTE and collaborate more, to not only build our program, but to help them in their subject areas. We're offering credentials in all of our classes. We're adding the AG credentials this year for youth quality care for the animals. And then also our CTSOs. We travel a lot. We have a lot of students interested in our CTSOs. And there's pictures of those on the sheet. We've got FFA there at the bottom. They actually have state competition toward the end of June. So we've got three students going to compete with that. We had several that competed earlier with HOSA, and that's the picture there with the ladies in blue beside the little CTE hearts. And then at the bottom are the Skills USA, and we had 33 students competing in that. And we actually have four that qualified for Nationals that are being held in Atlanta at the end of the month. Three of those people are going on. The fourth had a family obligation, so she's not gonna be able to go. So we have a lot of students that are interested in our CTSOs, whether it be welding, healthcare, carpentry, HOSA with healthcare, or AG classes. We have a lot of students interested in that, keep them involved in school experiences. I also want to just do a little shout-out. We did have a regional NCAT Teacher of the Year for CTE. That was Toby Sorrell. Of the graduating class, that's really what this fact sheet is about, of the graduates. Because we have tons of credentials that go on during the year that are not just our graduates. But that's really this brag sheet here. Around 70% of our graduates complete a CTE pathway. And we hope to keep that rising every year. One neat thing that we have been able to offer this year that was a first at the middle school is our computer science class with John Cook. And we kinda piloted that this year. And it's gonna, it will count as their high school graduation in computer science whenever we stop signing the waiver. We've signed it for last year and this year just because we wanna make sure that we are doing everything we can to get this going in the middle school. Because there's only six classes across the state that can be taught in the middle school for computer science. And we're offering, we offered one this past year. And we're actually gonna potentially be offering a next, another course with John Cook for this next year. So we're really excited about that. But 100% of those students were proficient with computer science. So that is just major kudos to middle school and John Cook for doing that. We're really excited about that. Not this next year, but the following year will be required for those graduates unless something changes. And currently at the high school, the only class that we offer that will count for that is Adobe with Brian Thomas. So it'll be the students who have not taken Mr. Cook, will have to take an Adobe class with Mr. Thomas. And he has great success too. But we wanted a way so that one teacher wasn't carrying the full load for graduation requirement. So that was our effort in trying to help with the computer science requirement. So major celebration there for the middle school. We had several students graduate with carpentry/welding certificates, as well as one student who did criminal justice. And that's completely online, the criminal justice certificate was. As you can see, the industry certifications we had through drafting class, through Adobe class. Some of our graduates graduated with eFoodHandler, which is through our foods classes. And that was previous to this school year because that position was vacant for this year. And then below that are also our healthcare certifications, including Stop the Bleed, Basic Life Support. And then we have CNAs. We graduated one CNA and 15 that are pending the actual skills part of the test. So it's broken into two parts. One's the computer part, and one's the skills part. And across the state, there's an issue with that testing. And they are gonna be tested by August. So we will know those numbers later in the, later in the summer. And then all of our students passed the pharmacy tech course that we offer. And they can now set for their actual certification where they can go out and be a pharmacy tech in the pharmacies. So looking forward, we're really excited that Laurie Sutton Bailey will be joining us teaching Foods 1 and Foods 2 this next year. She is super excited. And then we are looking at some new course options and expanding our partnerships in the community. And we'll be asking for you guys to vote on the plan, which again is the continuation from last year. And if you guys have any questions, come here.
It was cool to see that at graduation, how many kids?
Isn't that something?
Yeah, it was really great. Good work.
Okay. And we've already covered the next section on your agenda there. That takes us down to G, which are first reading of policies that have been affected by the DEI statements that have come out of Washington. Those policies have gone through Campbell Shatley. And we've made the changes that they have recommended so that we stay within compliance, probably largely for the executive order that was given. I would encourage you to look those over. And we might want to sit down and look at them. Although the changes that are in there have been recommended by Campbell Shatley. Okay? I just want you to have those. Go ahead and take a look at them. You'll see a recurring theme with this set of words that are being removed over and over, okay? The last item on discussion is the inter-local agreement approval. You have already seen this. You have, you've already agreed to push this forward to the commissioners. They approved it June 3rd. Stephanie went for me because I was in Raleigh getting ready for a state board meeting. And it's time for you to take formal action on that. The adjustments that have been made in that particular inter-local agreement are the adjustments that you requested in our last meeting. Okay? And then I filtered it through CSO with Campbell Shatley, and they agreed to them. Okay? So I'd be asking for your approval from that. I need to tell you that if you didn't know that the commissioners agreed to pay their local match for the Critical Needs Grant solely out of Road to Nowhere interest money. And so that is taken care of. And we did not, because of that, we did not have to ask for, or actually, the county did not ask for a drawdown from the money out of the Critical Needs Grant because it all came out of that Road to Nowhere interest money. So the full $52 million is still sitting there to use. Is that a correct statement?
Full $50.
For full $50.
So they're paying their match up for it.
Yes.
Instead of...
Okay.
And that will help?
Pardon?
And that will help us significantly on the architectural work and the financing bills that are already coming in now.
Yes. Yes.
Help us with the net 32?
Yes. True. Okay? So I'll be asking for your approval on that. Any questions? Okay, those are all of the action items, I mean, all of the discussion items. Are you ready to move into action?
I am, everybody is?
Okay, you need to take action on the consent agenda, I believe.
Yes, we need to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Consent agenda?
Second.
Any further discussion on it? All in favor, vouch for hands? Consent agenda is approved, and we can move on with that.
I recommend that the Swain County Board of Education approve the consent agenda that you just agreed to, including all the personnel and the minutes from the May 12, 2025 meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, vouch for hands? Pass agenda.
I recommend that the Swain County Board of Education approve the insurance policies of that Ms. Tredway mentioned a little while ago.
Motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, vouch for hands? Pass agenda.
I also recommend that the Swain County Board of Education approve the vehicle purchases that you have agreed to through technology already.
Motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, vouch for hands? Pass agenda.
I recommend that the Swain County Board of Education approve the driver's ed contract as it was presented to you.
Motion. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, vouch for hands? Pass agenda.
I recommend that the Swain County Board of Education approve the school nutrition bid that Michelle presented to you a moment ago.
Motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, vouch for hands? Pass agenda. And given the position that the board took a minute ago, I will make a motion that the Swain County Board of Education rescind its previous vote enacting a fee for Bright Adventures students.
Second. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, vouch for hands?
Yeah, second, third, and fourth there.
I recommend that the Swain County Board of Education approve the Haynes bid for the gym HVAC and also the power filtering.
Motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor, vouch for hands? Pass agenda.
I recommend that the Swain County Board of Education approve the CTE plan.
Motion. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, vouch for hands? Pass agenda.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the AIG plan.
Motion.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, vouch for hands? Pass agenda.
I recommend Swain County Board of Education approve Board Policy 6120, Student Health Services, Policy 4329, 7311, Bullying and Harassment, harassing behavior, and Policy 1310, Parent Involvement.
Motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, vouch for hands? Pass agenda.
And I would ask that the Swain County Board of Education approve the inter-local agreement with the revisions that you had asked for, as has been approved by the Board of Commissioners on June 3rd.
Motion. Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, vouch for hands? Pass agenda.
There are several FYIs. Just because the students may not be in the building every single day right now, doesn't mean that the school system stops. There are a lot of things that are going on. Gear Up is going all over the place right now. Just take a look at those. I would ask that you would please put June 26 at 4:00 PM on your calendars, if you can. The reason for that is Toby wants to run a tabletop safety drill with you. Okay? So that you can see the kind of thoughts that go through our minds whenever we are dealing with emergency situations. And that would be followed by the 5:00 PM budget closeout meeting on that same day. Okay?
Will both of those happen here?
Yes. We'll do the tabletop downstairs. Matter of fact, we could prob, we'll look and see if we can do the budget closeout here, unless you want to do it downstairs, Stephanie. Let's, let's just do it downstairs, okay? And Joe, if you could please put that on your calendar for the closeout meeting?
Is that to be broadcast?